Well, folks, we are here getting ready and just about to start the city council meeting. A lot of stuff going on today. Quite a few people signed up for public comment. Let's get into it. Like I'm saying, folks, wiped the turnout today. Quite a few people here.
Hello and welcome. Thank you, everyone, for being here. Glad we're at this location so we can fit everyone in.
I have been a long time resident in the area, around ten years. Some of you already know me, others not. I want to say that I have seen all the hard work that you all guys give for this community. I want to thank each other and everyone of the council members for the volunteer time that you guys put to make two places beautiful, well, for a place to live, a real vacation town. I'm very active in this community. I work with Rick in Lincoln County. I was a volunteer with him. I started to cook, to have in town. And I have some very active food lodge. And I have worked with Rick and many others around the town, so people know me. During my volunteer time, I just enjoy Walport in general. I really love it. I have seen many of the council members join our events and activities, especially Mr. Greg or Mr. Rick. But I never, I never see it before. I saw before the past mayor joined our community event. He always was there. I've never seen you, and I feel like it's a very important role in being a mayor, keeping involved in our community events. I'm engaged with the people, you said, right? Many people in this city, they never know you. They ask how should you, what should you hear. And I, I can tell that I attend almost everything for them. And Walport, I really, I don't understand. I don't understand why. Because for me, the, I know you have a lot of roles, right? But the main one, under my vision, is engaged with the community, people that you are serving, right? Many people, like I said, they don't know you. So my question is for you, Michael, what you have done so far in your time as a mayor to benefit Walport? I can understand that you can ask for this, but I think you showed the teaching about what is the nice thing for move forward, what you have done. Because we see that the rest of the council here have done that every day. Just look at cities. And we live in several different counties, several different places. And Walport have nothing to envy to a great cities, like New York, for example. And I'm very proud of all these people, and I want to say thank you through all my heart. By the way, I don't know, I saw Mr. Dan twice in my life. He's not my personal friend. And I want just the best for Walport, you know? I hope we can have today as we should and find a way that we can evolve together. Because always open conversation is the best for us. Thank you for your time, and again, I really appreciate everything that you guys have been doing because volunteering is hard. I know, I started to have, so. Thank you.
Okay, the next person is Tony Thamakis.
Hi, I'm Tony Thamakis. I know that you've got on your agenda that you're going to discuss changes in the council rules. Before you move into changes to justify the city manager, I'd like to encourage you to consider why the council rules were written and perhaps put yourself in the shoes of the writers and consider their intentions. Whistlebowl protections significantly contribute to fostering the environment of transparency within government agencies by encouraging individuals to report unethical behavior without fear of retaliation. This protection allows for the exposure of misconduct that may otherwise remain hidden, thereby promoting accountability within the bureaucracy. When citizens feel safe to voice concerns, it enhances overall trust in government institutions and reinforces the principle of transparency as a core democratic value. You, as a council, have been accused of intimidation and retaliation via the city manager on citizens with whom you or he disagrees. And now you want to remove the possibility of complaints by removing any possibility of protection by forcing the removal of whistlebowl protection. A government to transparency is committed. You have the ability, the authority granted by the citizens, and hopefully you'll act in the citizens' best interest. Thank you.
The next person on the list is Mina.
Okay, so mine's not going to take very long. First of all, I want to tell you, oh, you're doing an awesome job. In light of everything that's been going on, you guys have been an awesome job. Secondly, I want to recognize a guy that's had a special day today. I hope I didn't get in trouble for this.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Greg. Happy birthday to you.
And the next person on the list is Todd Swift.
I'm not good with math. My present to you is I will not talk about the Constitution. So I wanted to take my time today, not to address anything with the city-ish, but something that I feel is more important to the community as a whole. So the only thing on the ballot next month is Measure 21235. And it's the measure to unfortunately raise property taxes, and the average for a regular-sized home would be like an eighty-nine dollars. And that money would be earmarked and set aside for the Veterans Services Office of D. Paul. They service about five thousand veterans plus in the county, and that's about 10% of the population. Two hundred and twenty-seven veterans are loaning mall for, which is also a question of 10% of the population. A lot of Veterans Services, that's basically the only office that the county has, and it's the only resource that a lot of them have. A lot of them are not as fortunate as I am, where I have other resources and it's not family. Some of these people have nothing, and that's where they don't get help. Mental health, set up medical appointments, set up benefits, all kinds of stuff. So I'm just going to take my time. Please vote yes for me, 20235. Do you have any kind of influence in the community? Please use that influence to help us. Thanks.
We still have a minute to spare, Todd. Are you sure?
I told Greg I wouldn't talk about the Constitution.
All right, the next person on the list is Teresa Carter, please.
We were told back in August that there would be a, a plan on, for the audit as far as when it was going to be taking place, when we're going to get the information. Where is it? That was August. And we've been very patient since it was April, when I made it very well aware, everybody aware that we haven't got our audits done for five years. That's crazy. I know we're not alone, and I know COVID was in there, but you know, being there is work from home. I know several friends who did. So I consider this as an excuse, but I really do want to know when that audit's going to be released. Yeah, I'm talking about you, Dan. You were supposed to be the one that said, oh, we're going to have, have the timeline.
Information as are you. I can't make the math any faster.
So, but I'm saying that you said that there was a timeline.
I've asked. We're working with the company. That's all I can say.
Okay, but did you ask them? I have constituents that are really seriously interested in this.
I have said exactly that.
I can call them. I don't have a problem calling them, but you're very aware of that.
Yeah, you can. I cannot, you know, get water from a stone. We're giving them everything they ask for as quickly as we can, and we're churning out everything as quickly as we can, but I can't make them go in the basket. They're doing four years of work in, you know, in a short timeline, so we give them what they want, and we.
And, yeah, the last one that they did get back, it said insufficient information. So it makes it very hard, like having a check so that it's not balanced monthly. And so you're trying to figure out, where did this money go, or that money go?
Yeah, I would look at that report.
That one, we had sixteen.
That audit company, the auditor in question had a full auditing fur, as our accountant, for a year, and claimed not to have had sufficient information. I don't know what else to say. He had resources that were three times his size.
Hey, hey, you don't get to talk. You don't get to talk.
You asked a peaceful meeting.
Okay, the next person on the list, I believe, is Sandy Staples? Or, yes?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Are you sure?
No, you were pressed out, so I didn't know if you were so long. It was like you had.
My name is Sandy Staples. I am a resident of Walport. My husband and I purchased our house, I think, in nineteen ninety-seven. I want to thank all of you, Dan, Mayor, all the council members, for all you do. It's a thankless job. You receive a lot of criticism, and you don't get acknowledged for all the time that you volunteer and spend. And I would like to ask all of you who are going to do this recall, are you willing to spend your free time?
Absolutely. Yes.
Get on the ballot and.
What happens?
So thank you all for all you do, and I'm sorry.
Teresa, can you give me the answer to what you just said? Okay, looks like the next person is Corin Olson.
Corin Olson, I have served on the planning commission through the city and the city council, and sent my time. And I'm willing to do it again if compelled. The Walport City Council continues to operate in ways that disregard the opinions expressed by the majority of citizens during public meetings and ignore the clear will of the voters. Recently, the council has taken steps to limit the duties and authority of the mayor, an act that appears intended to punish her for pursuing greater transparency and accountability on behalf of the public. Councillors have also claimed they directed the city manager to, quote, "use all means necessary to prosecute a private citizen" and even offered to testify to that effect in court. Yet nowhere in the official minutes from the past fourteen months is there any record of such action being authorized by the city council. It has become increasingly apparent that this council operates as if it answers to the city manager rather than the people who elected them. Many members have failed to provide lawful oversight or ensure compliance with state requirements. Cost overruns, project reductions, and missed deadlines are routinely ignored or excused without induction. I'd also like to address the proposed changes to the city's complaint process on today's agenda. First, I want to ask directly, who authorized, who authored these proposed changes? Was there a committee that developed them in open discussion, or were they written by the city manager after serial conversations with select council members outside of public view? These changes appear to move in the exact opposite direction of what citizens have repeatedly requested. For months, the public has asked for a clear, independent process for filing complaints against the city manager, one that does not include him in the handling or review of these complaints. Instead, what we see proposed today places new restrictions on citizens and seems designed to protect the city's internal interests rather than the public's right to accountability. The language about protecting the city from retaliation is deeply ironic, given that much of this discussion stems from concerns that city staff themselves have retaliated against the citizen. Many of us have legitimate fears of retaliation when we speak up. That is why a fair, transparent, and independent process for raising complaints is essential. Without that, there can be no trust in city government. I urge the council to reject any policy that increases barriers for citizens or concentrates more control in the hands of the city manager. Instead, please listen to the community's repeated call for transparency, fairness, and protection from retaliation. Several councillors have also publicly stated that they can only provide oversight in areas where they have expertise, effectively surrendering their duty to city managers. But holding public office demands diligence, learning, and accountability. Not blind trust. If you cannot or will not provide informed oversight of all areas of city government, including IT, engineering, audits, or state law, if you won't provide the audit, the oversight, then you are not qualified to serve in these roles. If you refuse to do the job you were elected to perform, the honorable path forward is simple: resign and let others step up to serve, or face recall and removal by the voters. Thank you.
Rodney Morris.
First of all, I would like to say, I really like the idea of the new plan as being in front of the office where people come in and they're facing you, and, or they're talking to you about things that are not true, and you know they're not true. So this way, we would know these are truths that are being complained about, not a generic letter coming in from one address. So, first of all, as I could explain, this wonderful piece of equipment I get to wear, I had back surgery last week, and I did wear this for six weeks. It's not a new fashion statement. You aren't allowed by the state. They're very comfy. I'm here today to express my appreciation for Dan and the city council for following proper procedures, which is the training counseling had been provided a few weeks prior to the mayor confronting myself and Ellen. Thank you for taking the two formal written complaints from different employees seriously and addressing them according to protocol. While some groups, including Justice for Walport, and others that support the mayor, have publicly stated that the mayor was simply guiding us, the interaction with their employees, hateful questions involving direct directing, not asking, directing, questioning us, these are not lies. One hundred percent not lies. Why do we need video?
There was no video. Where's your fancy video?
Anyway.
Shut up.
Thank you. Questioning us, accusing us, and according to her feelings of the day, was not following the protocol. All the protocols were followed. We received the complaint letters, we opened them, date-stamped them, scanned them, and placed them in the appropriate mailbox. It is not the city staff that, excuse me, it is not the fault of the city staff that this may have been the first time the mayor personally checked her mail at City Hall. She has not checked it since. In the time with, in my time of the city, during which there have been four different mayors, it has always been standard practice for the mayor to work closely with the city manager. Unfortunately, this has not been the case recently. Before the recent wave of largely identical letters, that maybe not identical, but many of which came from the same address, signed by different people, the mayor would occasionally visit City Hall, but often express concerns about the city's commitment to treating all citizens equally. I recall her saying multiple times, now, Dan, we can't be so black and white. We need some gray areas. However, our team at the city have worked very hard over the past few years to ensure that all citizens and organizations are treated consistently and fairly. Clear rules and consistent procedures allow employees to perform their job confidently and professionally, having a city manager like Dan who ensures that staff have the necessary information to support and make hard, hard and difficult decisions. In closing, I would like to say, I'm sorry that this has come to this. Supporting employees and accepting, expecting equal standards for all has turned into what I feel like is a witch hunt against those trying to do their job. Thank you again, Dan and the council, for your professionalism and continued support, support of city staff. And I would also like to say, maybe those changes might be changed a little bit, but it would be really nice to have something consistent, that you can't just throw out a fairy tale and not, and expect people to buy into it.
The next person on the list is Mina.
Hi, council. Well, I can say that I had an interesting week, and it's definitely taught me a finger or two about retaliation from the government. People need to be able to be free of retaliation of their government. You are taking that away. It is a right of the people. That's all I have right now.
Okay, so now we go into discussion items. First on the list is standing background check policies. Any council have anything to say? Or ask about this change?
I did on this one. I understand that we had to do that with the school district, but a lot of these, like these positions, like I said on here, are volunteer positions, and this background check requires money. And so it wonders if it's going to eliminate who's going to volunteer for things, if they're having to pay for these background checks as well.
We would consider certain volunteer groups and certain volunteers, volunteers that would not be interacting without the guidance of somebody with a background check. We'd then at all times be exempted from the rule. But, you know, for example, volunteers in the library would need to have this check. Volunteers that are going to be working with kids in a new guard would need to have this check. So really, you know, it would be some of the volunteers who work in our museum, you know, would probably be exempted from this. There is a cost associated with it, but it's minor as, you know, an attorney friend of mine likes to say, pay for it now or pay for it later. This is definitely something that I'd rather have the checks done to ensure that we don't get a surprise.
So my question was, are we paying for it in the city, or is the person who's volunteering one to pay for it?
We pay for it.
Okay.
Unless you told me not to.
No, that's what I was hoping your answer was.
So the only committee that works with children would be the library? Because planning doesn't, the trails committee, you said, no one would be part of?
That's true. However, at various points, those committees may have cause to be on school grounds, so therefore we would need to, and the planning committee is, you know, much like that, and the trails committee, if they're on school grounds, we need to have them, so all of our volunteer groups would, the committee groups would follow this provision.
Unless there was someone at the school who wore a background check.
But then we have to pay for it.
Okay, would we do it with the public works?
Yes. Well, we did pay for public works. We paid for the contractor, because the contractor did not have time to do it.
So really, the concern is that we need our contractors and public works to be on our volunteers.
Yes.
Where, when they are. So when was the planning commission at the school?
Well, we have several projects that, at various points, might require the planning commission to tour of the school property, to tour of the city facilities. We need to ensure that all of these groups are equally vetted.
So we never had the planning commission at the school?
We absolutely have.
So right now, we're at level one, is that correct?
Right now, we do a level one for all employees. Elected officials are not background checked, and planning commissioners and other volunteers for committees are not background checked. We have had occasion, especially in the old trails group, where they would be interacting with children, walking trails through the service projects. We've had occasion to, not, not that recent, or not that unrecently, visit the pump station at the school en masse to talk about the project that was going on. Planning commissioners, also, when we get a conditional use permit, often we'll go and investigate these things in their capacity as our planning commissioner and go take a look at it so they can see what they're going to be voting on. These are the type of things that we want to make sure that if somebody is, you know, acting in what would be considered a city capacity, that they would be, that we would run a background check on.
We do do a level one, right?
We do a level one on all employees.
But not volunteers?
We have not done volunteers, except for volunteers in the library who are correctly working in the student programs.
Do you know what the Lake County School District does when it comes to the levels of background check? Because it doesn't seem so.
Two.
Oh, they do do a two for every volunteer?
Not for the volunteers. Volunteers are for our community.
Yeah.
It depends on the level, so we did, it depends on the level of volunteer and their level of supervised or unsupervised access for students.
So a level one would be an upgrade for our volunteers, and that would at least show if they had a state criminal record or sexually under charged?
Yes. However, the school, the school district has said that any personnel working with the city who enters their property at all or engages in any of their activities has a level.
So what if all employees are level two and volunteers are level one, and then for the trail committee, but, or any committee, there would be a city employee that could go, and if someone, that would be the level two supervision.
That's certainly possible, but if the trail committee, like the, I'm going to go back to the parks committee, they would often meet without a city employee to do things, but with an elected official, he usually is the representative on these committees. An elected official, we cannot require a background check on.
Well, we could do one anyways.
Absolutely.
So that's not a problem. But I do think that if we were the level two, I know that the school has a hard time with chaperones, because, I mean, the first level one, there's a lot of problems in our community where folks can't pass it.
Yeah.
So that's where my first instinct goes, is that we're going to do the volunteers, regardless if they have to be bored or not, just because they don't want to go through the background check.
I think it's important to note, the background check and passing a background check for employer are two entirely different things. A background check provides the information. The city decides on what is a failing status in a background check. We have had employees who have had criminal history. That does not preclude them from employment. That precludes them from certain activities that are specified in our financial policy or that are specified in, you know, the type of activity that we might allow that employee. or that are specified in, you know, the type of activity that we might allow that employee. But it's not a de facto background check. If we found that someone had a domestic violence abuse, that might be very different than if somebody was a consistent eater and had multiple abusive violations. You know, it's a level of concern and awareness that really is what this provides us.
So do we have that policy? The standard of the background check, of what you can, I've never seen that.
We do not have a formal policy. That's why it's always been on a case-by-case basis.
So maybe a formal policy would be a good place for council to start, on what is acceptable and what is not acceptable, and what we would worry about. Like, that makes sense that like works would go to a level two, because they have access to people's houses, where people live.
All employees will be getting a level two.
Right. I feel much more comfortable with that than I do with volunteers, with how they're working and stuff.
Yeah, I'm kind of the same way. I don't, I feel like if, I mean, I get what you're saying, that sometimes they'll be going places, but how often really is a trail committee going to be on school property unattended? Is what really my question is.
No, but they might be on the trail itself and riding with the children. And like if you're representing the city, to me, that kind of involves.
But you soon be on the trail alone, working in the trail committee, right? I mean, the trail committee is working in a group and doing things as a group.
Yeah.
So it's not like you have a person alone on the trail. I mean, that's, that's public safety for everyone, too.
What kind of expense are we looking at, roughly? It's fifty to seventy-five dollars per person.
But then they could come back after seventy-five dollars, saying that they had DUIs, and then that's still acceptable behavior? Or we don't know if that's acceptable behavior or not? We're lacking a formal policy.
Yeah, if they're dragging on vehicles, then no, that's not a lack of public rights.
Generally, there's always been a case-by-case situation, because I think creating a blanket policy that says, this is like a DUI, precludes employment, can very much limit, you know, certain individuals who may have made a mistake twenty years ago. That said, we've always gone through just a basic common sense check. People with violent offenses, people with, you know, sexual use offenses have always been, you know, denied. I would be very fortunate to say, I have never had to turn anyone away for any of those offenses. But we know that they're out there. Usually, those employees are very hesitant to apply for jobs, which acknowledge that they will have to go through a formal process.
When I worked for CASA, we had a very, very direct formal policy about what criminal activity was acceptable and what wasn't. And that helps protect us against lawsuits. Because if there was somebody who had something like, I don't know, like lost their daycare license, or lost their foster parent licensing, or something that would indicate a danger to children, but then, you know, it wasn't mentioned in our policy if that was acceptable or not, and then we use that as grounds. I guess, to me, that's relieving room, to me, we need to go backwards and create a policy about how we deal with the background checks before we start back. Although, I am in agreeance with the employees going to level two. I'm just talking about volunteers. Which, how many volunteers does this city have?
Applicable volunteers would probably, that would be required to do this, would be under twenty.
You know, you do it every year?
Every year.
There are some new questions?
Would it be beneficial at all if we did a level two for all employees? And then didn't stand a level one for volunteers? That way, there's something on them? And if they were going like up to the school, then maybe a level two person could join them at that period? So they have, have we got something on file?
It's up to you. We'll do whatever you'd like. This was just a, we're going to do all employees. So we wanted to piggyback and say, okay, well, if we're going to do this, what policy do we want to set just as a city in general? So that there's consistency. Okay, if you're going to work for us, you've got to do this.
Well, the goal of any level of background check was to protect the public and to some degree to protect the city. It seems to me that it's reasonable to go with what the public school district is requiring of us, rather than against them. Having lesser, now, if the individual is, the only difference for the individual practically speaking is fingerprinting, right? Otherwise, they're not disturbed or intervened or, there's no, there's no process that.
Yeah, we're not looking into finances, which is in the level three. We're not looking into social media, which is in the level three.
The cost is higher, also.
Do you have, should it start level one? Is it like twelve bucks or something?
It's, it's nineteen ninety-five, I think, the last time I did one.
I know, a lot of people just going up to me for it, because it's a different standard. It's a big problem, so.
We would actually host, what we're looking at is having your company come down and host a day wherever you would come to City Hall and do it.
The school district has talked about setting something up.
They have to be, because.
Have they, did you get a response when you told them we would be happy to help out with that?
Yes, they're eager, they're, they're looking at setting something up formally to be able to do it. The biggest challenge, and the hardest thing for us, really, employees is easy, volunteers, whatever you guys decide. This was just an idea of like, let's get everybody on the same, say, level. Really, the challenge for us is contractors. When we have, and it's not the, not the formal big bid contractors. That was a short-term thing, which we would have solved in any future contract. It's the hiring, I'm going to use him as an example, because he's been around here forever. Hiring Gary Niasse to go out and do a survey. And when he surveys, he has to walk onto the school property, you know? So now we have to make sure that he and all of his contractor, or all of his employees have either one of our staff with them, which is challenging at times, or have all been background checked, or we have to pay the school district. And frankly, I don't think the school district loves the idea of pulling one of their employees off to go babysit some guys, which they had to do during the sewer project. So really, at the end of the day, that's our challenge. Our challenge really is solving the contractor problem, which really is out of this scope. That the volunteer thing is just a, if we're going to do this for all employees, should we do it for all our volunteers, and at what level? And that is entirely the policy level of the council to decide what they want.
Is contractors working on city business without public works present?
Yes.
I volunteered at this school with the Aspire program. And wondering, I don't believe there was a background check on me from my work. And that was just two years, three years ago.
I think it depends also on how often you volunteer? And if you just came in one time with a smile, oh?
I mean, I've gone to speak to all the preschool classrooms and ladies in background checking for that.
Yeah, and that's because you're like signing in.
I was working directly with students.
Well, it could be under the same guise of that, with supervisor.
So I think, I think they've upped their game.
Yes.
This is not, this is relatively new.
The contractor that did our sewer project across the school grounds, this DSL, they do projects with the school district regularly. This was new to them as well. And that's why they said that they just didn't have time to get their guys up. And because there wasn't an identified clear pathway to do it. And that's why we had to go through an extra route to make sure they were monitored. Which was fine, it went great, done. We're quitting on testing. But at the end of the day, in any future contract, this will be built in to the contractor's plan.
They have to be a level two, okay?
Yes, that they will have to provide level two background checks on all the employees that will be working on the project and provide that to the city.
So really, we're just figuring out if we need to make volunteers level one and/or, or level two? Or nothing at all, I guess is it? Employees we want to be level two.
And contractors?
Yeah, and contractors, yeah.
And the program I've been in, I'm a volunteer, other than as a chaplain. The kids that I've been dealing with, everyone that's at that school. And I don't think, I mean, if this is changing to me, I agree with the mayor, that we should start collaborating the policies and make sure we can do it. There are volunteers who really want to work. You're going to have that stigma that they can't get in the door because they can't. I, I'm not up for free to bring for volunteers. Maybe in the future, but not today. I mean, employees, yes, I mean, as a chaplain, every organization I'm involved with, I had to turn it down nine times, and it didn't change at all in the same time. But that's just the rules of those agencies. I don't think, I don't, I don't see a level two for the twenty people that may not even walk on campus. And I, I understand the trail thing, I do understand the trail thing. But I can be walking the trail, I have nothing to do with any else. And somebody could go up and say, can I see your background check?
Do you carry your passport?
I have uniforms and cards and everything else, so I always can flip one on. I'm not up for a level two.
You should be able to tell just by looking at it.
See what happens when I, when I open my mouth.
What I think is funny here is you're probably one of the few people in this room that has done a level five.
Yes, I probably am.
So can I motion?
Yeah, of course.
Or does anybody else have something to say? I motion that the city adopt the requirement of a level two background check for all employees and a level one for volunteers.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye. Anyone a no, a nay? All in favor? Okay, next business is review of ordinance regarding Title V updates. And I missed the conversation about this in the last meeting due to my illness. Does anyone want to enlighten me on what I missed about conversation on these ordinances?
Then he was taking it to a lawyer to track this up and bring it back to us, like all we talked about.
It seems that Mr. Blake is here in person. If anyone has any questions, I guess, about these ordinances? Does anybody have any comments?
I guess I have a few. On the first paragraph, okay, J eleven, I was, my question was, must all businesses be registered with the IRS?
Yes.
So terrible. So does that mean that anybody who wants to do anything with the city has to be a nonprofit or a regular?
Yes.
All right. So those citizens, pick up an event?
This is not talking about, this is not events. This is.
Business license.
Yeah, this is business license.
Right, oh. So, or guess LLC would still be the same, right?
So then on P under five point oh, four point oh, six oh, talking about third-party property. So I assume that for instance, maybe called treasury, resort? That's not quite right, what is that, food place?
The glamping?
The glamping place, yeah. They have those canopy places for food trucks. So they would not?
Food trucks would need to be licensed.
Even though they're, it says. If they exterior to the property structures, is that not obstruction?
No, that would still be an exterior installation, much like the.
Do you like to find a Tupperware party in my house, right? Nobody has to, it doesn't matter, nobody cares. Yeah, that's kind of what that is saying, right?
What I'm thinking of, the honey guy. Like the honey guy who's selling outside of another business.
We have worked really.
With a property or a structure, and I think he's like.
He's outside.
Yeah, he's outside.
So, so how would this affect him?
He would have to have the same license that he has to have now. It would have no effect on him.
So he does have a license?
So here's the problem. He has a business registry, I, I don't want to get into his personal stuff. But we have been working very hard to help him come into the compliance necessary. And he has, in good faith, made an effort to do so. He is just having some challenges with the legalese of running a business.
So in terms, there's a lot of places in town, port property, for instance, would that disapply to them?
If, if the port ran a business, the port's already a business. So they're fine.
Okay.
If.
It is a third party, though, that's.
Yeah, if a third party threw up a, let's say somebody threw up a, I'm going to give you a good example. Let's say somebody threw up a kayak rental, a high school student threw up a kayak rental.
Yeah.
They would come and register it with us. And we would almost certainly find a way to not charge them anything under that, you know? But if somebody started a formal kayak business there and threw up a shack, they would have to go get a business license for operating within the city. And the reason that we have business licenses, and the reason that we do this, is so that there's accountability chain if something happens. So if somebody files a port claim against, say, the guy going around and selling magazines because he never delivered to them. We actually have verified that he's got a state business license and that there's an accountable address associated with his business, so that they can come to us and say, we need this information, it's public record. We can provide that, and that they have a way to address a problem.
So suppose it's a private space, say like maybe where dry owns, we're going to build houses up on the hill, and it's somebody, a group wanted to have a Renaissance fair there, so it's on private property.
So that's an event, that's not really what we're talking about in this section.
Okay.
But that's in the next section.
And could they sell something at the Renaissance fair? It's what you're getting at, right?
Well, even if they need a food, or, yeah.
Or with any vendors.
Kind of like the Tupperware party.
Well, a lot is inside, but that's clear, it's outside.
And believe it or not, Tupperware sales or internal home sales are covered under a totally different licensing within the state. And generally, when you're having that type of event, Tupperware is a big company. There is a chain of, you know, kind of liability that you go back to.
So, so these, so the changes that I see seem to be mostly about the ones they market. And it seems to say that they don't need a business license in order for them to sell at the ones they market.
This was a big concern.
But if they're selling food.
They still have to have the county license. We don't have the county license.
Okay. So they're still bringing licensing to show that they were approved by the county?
Yeah.
But they don't need a business license? So any, so what about like, sorry, I'm really unconvinced, so I'm really. If we're at the moose and we're having a street fair outside of the moose, then none of those folks need a license? Because that's a, that's a city-approved motion?
So when the moose did the street fair, the moose filled out the event permit. We gave them that, and this would allow them, because they've gotten the event permit, to exclude the intolerant merchants from having to have a license. The feedback that we got from multiple groups was that many vendors were discouraged from participating in events within the city if they were forced to have a business license, because they just didn't do enough volume to justify the fifty dollars. I'm not going to argue about spending a lot of time if you're not making fifty bucks during the day. But at the end of the day, I absolutely agree. And our solution was, if this is a registered event and we have some liability coverage for it, then they don't need licensing. If we don't have that coverage, if there's, if it's a little, you know, kind of fly-by-night, we need them to have a business license, so that if somebody has a complaint, and we've had this happen, or somebody's had a complaint and come in and said, hey, I got stiffed by this group, who are they? And we've been able to provide the Oregon Business Registry to that or individual. And we've been able to provide the Oregon Business Registry to that individual so that they can come back and say, okay, thank you. And then they go away and they file their complaint, whether they get their money back or the grievance addressed, is not the city's concern. I mean, it is, we want everybody to be treated well and want people to come back. But at the end of the day, our goal is to make sure that we have that accountability in businesses. It also ensures that if somebody's got a business registry and they've gone through the process, they're likely, at least on the face, operating their business lawfully. We have had in the past a lot of businesses that kind of flew under the radar and did not get these licensing, and never registered to the state. Who knows if they're even paying taxes or if they're just occupying the building. A prime example of this was, we had a renter up in the old Orange, um, meat building, um, that was operating a business, did not have a business license. We sent a deputy up there, they cracked open the door to try to arrest them, and it was this massive pot field across the higher building. So, we, no, they started the process to address that, and strangely enough, the next day, that building was starkly empty. Because they figured out the cops. So, this is one of the reasons that we do ask for these substances.
So, in the, the, um, for the purposes of this chapter, the operation, renter maintenance, and management of any apartments or other housing facilities owned by a housing authority or other unit or agency of the United States of America, the city of Walport. I'm at the very bottom of page eleven, I, I can't tell if that means HOAs?
No.
Or so, HOA, so, so only housing that is owned by the housing authority?
Yeah, this is so that if, if the housing authority builds housing, this has been in our code for twenty, thirty years, that's not a part of the changing code.
Right, but they, so, okay, so you're just saying that housing authority don't need a business license, that other apartments do?
Yes.
Well, it's like Sweet Homes or Meredith or those would, would be licensed, would that not grant?
Right.
And long-term rentals, the license is zero. We want to encourage long-term rentals, so we've never had a cost associated with a long-term rental license. It's important that people get one, because one of our biggest issues is people not telling us that they're running a rental. And the difference between an owner and a tenant is very different when they're trying to get utilities signed up or get other services.
So we just need a motion to adopt, uh, the changes to Walport municipal code?
No, you would need to, uh, ask the mayor to read ordinance number eight, fourteen, twice by title, and then a motion, and then a second, and then a vote.
I just have one more question about the charitable purposes, um, because that is new, uh, to conduct operations for charitable purposes if the organization is approved. So that goes back to what you were saying, that it has to be a five oh one, five oh one C three or five oh one C four, but if an individual wants to donate?
Yeah, so the private individual, although that would be a question.
And I get, and I was just trying to think of circumstances, like the closest thing we could do is a space sale, maybe?
Although that, I think is covered by that last paragraph, is it not? Judicial sales.
Yes.
If no profit, though.
Well, yeah, this says of which no profit is derived, like if the chamber's gonna have a fundraiser, an altar, and we take in more money than we spend out, it derives some profit, although the chamber is a nonprofit, so that's where it's a little confused.
So the interesting thing is, a nonprofit doesn't mean you don't make profit.
Right.
It means that your profit can't go to certain purposes, it can't go to shareholders, it can't be distributed among, I mean, you can still pay nonprofit employees as long as it's in the, like, approved format, you know, um, you know, I know that, uh, years ago, the Susan DeCoeur got in a lot of trouble because they were collecting a tremendous amount of money, and what they were failing to do is disclose the salaries of a lot of their chief executives. And when they did, people went crazy, and they restructured to accommodate that.
Okay, so, I'm just gonna use South Lake County Resources as an example, but not trying to single them out. But I, I'm thinking of them as being someone, like, let's say you had a bunch of donations of something that worth a lot of money and you had to sell. That is exempt from this, they don't need a business license?
They need a pre-business license. Because they're operating. Charities all get a free, we just need to know that they're operating, because.
So that's not associated with a registered entity, is what that, the boldness is saying, if it, so if they have a license, so you need a tax ID? And then you would need a business license, right?
That costs nothing.
For nonprofits.
Yeah, for nonprofits, right.
It's out of my, it's out of my level, but.
Alright, any other questions? Do you want to review our ordinance?
Yes.
Ordinance number eight, fourteen, an ordinance amending chapter five point zero four of the Walport Municipal Code regulating business licensing within the city of Walport and declaring an emergency. An ordinance amending chapter five point oh four of the Walport Municipal Code regulating business licensing within the city of Walport and declaring an emergency. All in favor? Right, what's that? Oh, I thought that was.
I knew the adoption of the amendment.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, moving on, to the second change in ordinance. So this one is the regulating events within the city of Walport. This one has a lot of changes.
And the changes are all in bold or strike-through, that's important to note.
Can you repeat what the, what it is?
Events, regulating events.
Thank you.
So the public forum, it says physical place, like a park or a street, does that also include sidewalks and parking lots, or?
Sidewalks, parking lots are, are associated with the structure, but sidewalks and, uh, certain roadway, certain right-aways would be included in a traditional public forum.
I think you said sidewalk on both, both examples, but.
Parking lot.
Yeah.
Yeah. Sidewalks are associated as a, a, um, public forum, and the sidewalks associated with the right are associated with a public forum. A limited public forum would be the building for the control space, so as a great example, this building right here is a limited public forum. The parking lot out there is a limited public forum. The sidewalk associated with it, however, is not, that would be a public.
So, I've had the public asking me about, uh, how this would affect Township thirteen's only. Because, because it's.
It's on private.
Well, it's a, it's a, it's on private property.
Right.
But it's not something they invite people to.
It would have absolutely no effect because it's not an event, it's just where everybody goes because of the density it has, much like the.
Because it's candy.
You know, and it's interesting.
So they wonder, if they ask for donations, would that make it an event?
If they, as a group, ask for donations, if the HOA asks for donations, it doesn't make it an event. Because they're still just, as a local community group, as their HOA, just trying to get more candy so that people don't have to spend two hundred dollars on candy for people to show up. It only becomes an event if they make it an event. If they start advertising, bringing people in, charging money, or closing off the road specifically for it. Fred Myers is a great example, they closed the road up at Fred Myers in Newport, that becomes an event, the police department is involved. But it's still kind of just a, it's the equivalent of a, um, community, um, pop-up, effectively on the road. So, i- in many ways, it doesn't fit into a good category that the city has in terms of the.
Well, I think that we could end up in the same situation, I mean, Township thirteen is gonna be huge on Friday, thirty first this year.
So then we need to accept, exempt them from this?
I don't, I don't think so, I don't think so, because technically, people, the people in Township thirteen could all decide to turn off their porch lights. And kids would go up there and it'd be dark, and they'd just go down to the next minute, be mine. You know, the reality is, kids go for the biggest, and families go for the biggest amount of, let's get our kids as much candy as possible in half an hour if it's raining, and we wanna go home.
Um, on number five, are we, is that something we'd like to know, we would give them a map and they were.
That was specific.
Be able to draw on it, or is that just for that one event?
That was specific to one event.
Oh, okay.
But with the, once approved, we will generate a form and we'll have some very detailed, like, this is all you need for the map. Because in, historically, people overthink the map in some cases and underthink it for others. And we just need people to understand, we just, if you're holding a huge event, we just need to know, if you've got a hundred and fifty cars coming to Layton Park. You know, if you've got all that parking coming and you don't have a plan for it, you know, other communities, they force them to get buses from local schools. We just need to know, okay, where do you expect, how many people do you expect, and where are they gonna park? Because our biggest issues are when the crowds exceed the capacity dramatically and there's no parking place. And we do have a lot of public lots that are available for parking, we just need them to identify it so we can ensure that those lots are in fact available. So we can say, hey, you said you're gonna use the community center parking, for example, but the community center is full. You know, um, trunk or treat coming up is gonna be one of those where we have to figure out exactly where parking is gonna be, because we're gonna have a lot of people come down for it. But we're gonna have a lot of different activities in the places that people might park. So we just need to say, okay, we expect parking to be over here, we expect parking to be over here, and make sure that those areas aren't encumbered by, say, a semi truck parking lot. Which is what used to happen in Southwood all the time.
It seems like a lot of changes.
What everyone kind of asked for that, because it was complicated before, and I thought we talked about these changes to make it easier and better.
And so is there community input? I remember in the last meeting in August or almost July, there was comment about having public input about the process, did we get public input? So this is just advisements in the city attorney?
Probably, but do you read anything on it that, like, you think that's, like, super concerning, or like?
Well, so every paragraph has, like, this whole page is whole. It just seems like there are a lot of changes to be making about events when we've had so much, um, controversy over the last events. And I just don't understand why we haven't had more input from the public about this process before we changed the ordinance.
But I think that controversy over a particular event does not mean that, you know, we can't consider events in general. I mean, I think that was a certain expression case, I think you pretty much all know about that case. So, you know, I don't think we need a committee every time you're going to change a little changes.
Oh, no, I, I agree, I just remember when these were first brought to our attention, Greg Dunn, I was for Dunn, he was the first table we done. That, that he said that he, that this was brought forward because of the Beachcomber's attorney, and that these were loopholes that we were filling.
That was part of it, yeah.
And so I just feel that that's not taking consideration of what the community has, what input they have, or. I mean, I, I think it's as easy as just like asking the community if they have problems or concerns or wanna talk about to this, that they come to our next meeting and talk to it.
Yeah, I think that's a good point, I think that we've also listened to lots of people speak about stuff, maybe in general, and some of it on point to us. And we've made, and some of the changes, like, I feel like have been reflected enough, but I think it would be bad for us to say, if anybody has any comments on it, come and tell us, I think that's right.
I just still think that it is a rush, I guess, where I'm at, and I feel like there's a lot of changes. I mean, I've been looking at this for the last week, trying to understand what all the changes are and why we're making the changes and how that affects, you know, events. Because I think we all look for events in our community. So to me, this was like a lot of, I, I just don't wanna create more barriers instead of making it easier, and I just think like.
Changes and having it very clearly laid out like this, with what the two different lawyers together have come to say that we need, make less barriers? So then there's less pretty area, like, they know they need this, this, and this?
Well, my understanding of the letter that I saw from the Beachcomber's attorney was this is why the event should happen. So, I don't, to me, that's not barriers, that's like what allowed that event to happen. So I don't wanna make changes that are not allow that event or events like that to happen in the future.
Well, I know part of this was to take care of problems that they did raise, and it is a moving thing, I mean, if there's more, it's a need to change for people to see, you know, on number six. So, that's about service of alcohol, so is that only on city property, for instance, or is that now wider than on city property?
Well, so this gets to, specifically, number six gets to something that we don't actually ever say, either, that an alcohol permit has to come to the council. This became an issue because, you know, the attorney raised, like, well, why are we doing this, it doesn't say, you know, you have to. And I say, well, we specifically state that you don't have to in these cases. So the presumption of the city was that if it's not directly given under my authority, that that then is returned to the council's authority. So now we're just making it so that they know, because this was a problem when you get an application for alcohol service within a very short period of time, there's not a council meeting. People need to be able to read this and say, oh, hey, I need to get this in quickly, because a lot of those requests, there's plenty of time for them to come through.
Right.
You know?
I mean, it's always been high docs to rule that a, a serving of alcohol on city property needed council okay.
It was a policy adopted by the council back, I wish Rita was here. What year? What year, see, the problem is, I'm looking through these, and so everybody's fuzzy on this.
We only need the U and M tree. I think it was, uh, nineteen, or nineteen ninety-nine, two thousand, somewhere along in there. So, because I started in ninety-five, it was right about the time where we were, uh, with the full contest, and I'm about with, um, the fire district having their, their, brought some beer on city property. And we had a counselor who was very adamant that, you know, alcohol should not be cleared on city property. So I'm thinking that it was in the late nineties, probably, I, you know, I could certainly check.
I think that's close enough.
So are we saying now that it's not on city property?
If you're holding an event that you want the city to sign off on with alcohol, we have to sign, so the city has to sign the alcohol. If you're holding it at, at the founder outside on your property, that's a whole different thing, and that doesn't matter. But if somebody's asking for a city permit to hold an event which encumbered city property, that really should come to the council.
So that's really not.
No, it's, we're just saying it now instead of it being an implied policy. And a lot of these, a lot of these changes are from Mr. Stamsen, communication back and forth. And discussion, um, regarding, okay, well, how do we make it clear so that there's not, and, because a lot of the consternation was over ambiguity in the way. This eliminates the ambiguity, uh, as a great example, um, you know, organizers wishing to use a third-party property need to provide us a letter just saying, hey, that business says that they're not gonna be, they're not gonna hold the city responsible if somebody falls and breaks the leg. You know, we can't, I can't encumber another person's property without their, effectively, without their saying, hey, okay. Whether that holds up or not in court, a lawyer's gonna sue everybody, no matter what. So this is just, and, and the strength of that, you know, indemnity, you know, sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't.
Is it, is it really worth anything to have that indemnity?
Yeah, it is. But that all, that same thing goes into, which is really my only input on this, which was the traditional public forum. The city can't require an indemnity for something that is a traditional public forum, so sidewalks. Well, the one that was kind of at issue in, um, Beachcomber one was the fire department. That could be found to be a traditional public forum. That could be found to be a traditional public forum. So, you know, now we have it based on these Supreme Court cases, that's an exception. Going forward, the fire department won't have to sign an indemnity, and it was not clear under the old version.
And also, I am sensitive to saying that we're in for, you have to get a permit, an open permit. I feel like that's an infringement to, you mean, people can collect and go down the street, right? Why would we need a permit to be able to go down the street?
Thing is, if any streets are blocked, is that?
Well, no, it says right here, for special events, nine one seven, which require closure of street sidewalks or for any parade. So to me, that doesn't mean if you don't have any street closures or obstruction, you still need a, a, a permit for it?
Oh, you mean, like, if we're having, like, a dump parade down the sidewalk or something for fun?
Yeah.
I don't know that, I don't know, that's a good question.
Well, it says for any parade, so that's what's it, or closure of streets.
Well, if we're not closing the sidewalk and we're walking on it and we're doing ourselves, I don't think that that falls into, to me, the way I read it.
Yeah, it would be, any that would require the use or closure of streets, sidewalks, or other public right of ways, that, you know, a parade would be scheduled as an event. You have to say, and I'll give you a perfect example because we just had it, the hands across the bridge. The event where they are going across the bridge, but they're not blocking the streets. At some point, people, I think, cross the street, but not stupidly.
They had a bulk car. They were slowing a lane for sure.
So, but when you add for, for any parade after you've said special events that will require the use of closure of streets, it sounds like you're adding another element, right?
So we can say any event parade. Now, you can keep in mind that the signage can be modified, and in particular, it could be modified easily because Mr. Blake's right here, and he can say, no, that's a horrible idea.
I think the one thing that is addressing, and I'm cutting in on you, is every time we have a state champion going to the state champion, the hands of the bus and the fire department and everybody else. You know what Heidi's talking about, that's a parade. Because, trust me, they come right down, rain drive, and they slow everybody down. And if that means that you got to have a parade every time, when you have somebody going to state, I don't think that's a-
That's not what we want.
It's a great event.
That's a great event.
That person is all your person.
So it's, it's not, because that technically does not constitute a parade, but we would have to define parade more carefully.
Or, or, or tell us what-
The answer, the definition at the top of what a parade is.
Or tell us what you were trying to do by putting those three words in there.
I just think that this is a lot of change, and I, I feel for everybody who thinks maybe right now. Because there's a lot of deliberations still happening here. So I personally don't think that we're ready to vote on this. I personally would love to have community input. I don't know if we want to have a workshop or how, I don't think we need a committee by any means. But I would like to make, provide an opportunity for people to come who have events or want to have events to be able to hash out those definitions and those changes. Because there's probably over a hundred changes here.
There's no rush on this, right? So why couldn't, could we hold off, maybe take these ordinances, put them on our website, maybe put them on Facebook, say, these are the proposed changes we're looking at. If you have any concerns or questions, please go over to our next meeting.
I love that.
That way we can, I mean, if most, most people are going to know, if there's some people that may still have questions about that.
So it's really important to know, and I, and this, this should be said overall. When I make these recommendations, they're not like you have to do any of this. You can come back on these rec, and I'm going to go back to an example. Years ago, we had an offer to buy a building, now an adult toy shipper, but we had an offer to buy a building, and I had this idea, and I go out to the council, and the council shot it down. That's what I'm supposed to, I'm supposed to bring you ideas and bring you discussion pieces. I'm supposed to bring you a framework for, say, a change to the rules about something, and then you guys rip it apart however you want. That's the great part about being in your chair, is you're the bosses, not me, and you can do whatever you want with this ordinance.
But they're the bosses. They're the bosses. So, like, we want you guys to come and tell us how these changes affect you guys. Because if they complicate your thought parade or whatever celebration, then that's not our intention to do. So I love your idea of putting it up on the website.
I just think they may have questions.
You gave the powers of the council. It's free, well, now we have to write.
Since we're in a hurry, so I think it's important.
All right.
None of this is in a rush. None of this is in a rush.
So we're going to, this is a step forward then?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we'll put it on the, I just want to get clarity. So you'd like me to put it up on the council and put a link on social media, or put it up on the website, put a link on social media to it, and then ask people to come to the next council meeting to discuss this?
And/or email us, maybe people don't have big things.
Just buy the next council date, so we have it.
Okay, I will do so.
All right, the state time, move on to the council agenda, Cutter's chief for discussion on proposed and revised written. Title, proposal to amend the council rules regarding the attorney. Anybody have any comments about this?
Yeah, my question is the D part. I, I have a big issue with grown adults, and it's happened, I mean, before on, I will say on council before. Where we talk about something, we agree on it, and there aren't any consequences for it. Like, we just put it out there to make it sound nice, and then people don't do what it says, and then we do nothing.
For instance, give us a new sample.
For instance, I think we had, this is the only one I can think of, we had the Facebook thing where it was like, I don't, people posting for the city, speaking for the city, when that's not, like, that's the city's job to do, and if you want to speak for yourself, that's your thing. But, like, we're not speaking for the city. And they do it, and nothing ever happened about it. And that was my concern last time, this never happened anyways. So I feel the same way about this, if we're, all this stuff about the attorney, and we're contacting the attorney without saying, all this says is fails to follow this process, indeed, it says that, will not be considered communication from the city, and the attorney is directed to simply respond when they're unable to speak with council direction. So we're just, like, letting it fly, don't do it, but you can constantly do it, and the attorney's just going to be like, no.
No, because he's going to say, sorry, I can't-
Well, he's going to say that, and then we're just, that's it.
Well, if he won't do it and they can't get anywhere with it. I mean, if I call the attorney and say, you know, I want to do blah, 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 and he says, I'm sorry, unless you have council direction, I cannot, you know, help you, then it doesn't go anywhere.
I thought this was already in Google, in our trainings that we get every time we have to watch them. But again, like, where some people are still, you know, emailing directly to the attorney, and I talked about this on the-
So I believe the council rules are that we have to go through a city council meeting or the city manager and exhaust those avenues before. So I know, I personally have asked for removal of the attorney, and they denied those meetings, and they were involving the city manager. So I was under the belief that I had exhausted those resources when I reached out to the city attorney. Now, what I am worried about with this particular part in the packet is I personally filed two complaints about the city attorney and two counselors at this table. All of those have gone ignored, and, well, they're not on the agenda.
I thought they were on the session.
Oh, I'm sorry, I had to, I didn't see personnel as part of the, like, the session, so that's why I thought that it wasn't about personnel. At any rate, I find that it's odd that our council is comfortable with not having the attorney present. And I had asked since I've been elected why our new council, which I know I've worked with before, wasn't at least coming in court and coming to our meetings? Because the city pays for the city manager to meet with the attorney privately, but not with all of us together. And because we were dealing with so much litigation, so many allegations, it makes sense to me that the attorney would be present. If we're going to be paying for his advice, that he'd be present in a public meeting when we're all in meeting together.
I, we used to have the attorney come for every meeting, and it was a tremendous expense, and it would be quite an expense. I mean, you know, we would be here two, three hours every meeting.
Well, he's meeting with them at least three hours a month.
Well, this is, you know, he is here for this meeting because we have the executive session in progress to deal with.
The average- I thought that I had requested his presence and someone seconded it. I, I wasn't quite clear how he got here.
Well, because of what we're dealing with, he's likely to be there.
Oh, I thought that he was-
The city manager actually did that.
I think Sue did that, too.
I never saw a second from the council, but the city manager instructed me to be here, but he's in her place.
Yeah, so that's interesting, because I'm told that we have to have two council members to have something on the agenda and to have a request for the attorney.
I think Sue did it at the last meeting, like, you're the one, she wrote your letter and she brought it up and said, I were too, and then we all agreed, yeah, it should have gone to happen. Yeah, so great. Remind me, so, yeah, that all worked out. I don't, okay, so I guess I don't, maybe that's the part I'm not understanding, like, what you're clarifying, after exhausting other resources.
And that's why we-
So that's the, oh, so that's why we're clear.
Yeah, that's why, because it's taken away that.
So if there's no, yeah, so if one person just wants to speak to the attorney, then, yeah, okay, I get that.
After, so, so you're asking us to vote on saying that the council cannot request legal counsel? That's, that is what you guys' intentions are?
That one person cannot speak, that's happening.
That one person can't speak for me, not with the council.
One person can go to the attorney.
Like, any attorney?
Well.
And like, honestly, it would die, yeah.
No, I mean, like, we just paid for our defense on Dan Cutter, and there was no vote on that.
They don't need it, but it was in his contract.
Well, to work under the direction of council.
No, no.
No, he doesn't work under the direction of council.
Well, council works under the-
Maybe for getting a contract.
Yeah, we argue that.
Well, I guess that it comes to my heart, because I don't understand how the city manager's working without the direction of council when their heart goes simple. But we can get to that, I guess, with an executive session.
Yeah, right. But this is the, the tricky part is that, what you're talking about, and I could perhaps wrap and head around that part. If there is one person on the council who feels like it's necessary and nobody else agrees, that person has the ability then to get to ask for the attorney to do it. That's what we're really discussing, yeah.
And also that you're pulling with each other without an actual meeting. So we can't, for me to say, is anyone agreed, that's, that's a serial meeting.
Like, no, you're supposed to do it through Dan, like, you email Dan, and Dan sends it to us, that's what's in our charter, that's what's in our-
More importantly, there are exceptions to public meeting law in terms of scheduling meetings, scheduling items for the agenda that are allowed to be discussed in a serial fashion. There is a specific call out in Oregon public meeting law that says, you can talk about these things about education, you can talk about these things about scheduling a meeting, you can talk about these things about agenda items for meeting, you can't make a decision outside of the meeting. So in other words, you can't decide, and, I'm sorry, I'm going to use this as an example. You can't decide to, you know, that, to approve a proclamation for Beachcombers outside of the meeting. It has to be at the meeting. You can't say, well, hey, I'm going to do this, I'd like to, I'd like all your permission. That's requesting a decision by the council. You can absolutely say, hey, I'd really like this to be on the agenda, you know, can you make sure, if you agree, to let Dan know so we can make sure this is on the agenda because it's really important? That's allowed. That is the call out that is allowed by Oregon public meeting law. You know, saying, hey, I'd really like the attorney to be at this next meeting, that is a call out, that's a call out for essentially an agenda item, and that is an exception to public meeting. So that is an allowed use, and the council can then decide whether that is a acceptable allowed use or not. What we're stating here, and the reason that we're clarifying this is because of individuals contracting the attorney directly and having them do research that they're to pass, that costs the city significant amounts of money. What we're saying is, okay, we need to have an established protocol. The city manager goes to the attorney and deals with, I deal with the city attorney on a regular basis on a number of items of city interest. That's a requirement of my job, it's a requirement of managing a city. The council, at any point, can say, hey, we'd like Cory to weigh in on this. And if the four of seven of you decide that that is important, Cory will weigh in, the city attorney will weigh in on that. If the majority of council doesn't feel that way, and this is something that's really important to remember, the council, as a body, has authority. Individual council members have absolutely no authority.
So in this email that I have, it says, I have discussed with other council members your request for urgency, and based on their feedback, this is not a matter the council feels is needs to hold a special meeting for, or to address, none of these are urgent issues, and again, in violation of council rules. You are not directed to contact the attorney. So that sounds like a serial meeting to me. That feels very much so like there with this person was pulling the council, deciding whether or not it was urgent, whether or not the council feels that they needed to hold a meeting for. Why wouldn't we have not had an executive session to discuss if that is the case?
Because that is the exception to serial meeting law, where under, so, one nine two, I want to say six nine D, can specifically call the council member and say, do you want to hold a meeting, yes or no? Is this an urgent matter? We want to hold a special meeting, yes or no? That is a scheduling exemption, and that is an allowed, just topic of discussion by any member or a quorum of council members without violating public meeting law.
Okay, so then when it says, without council permission, we will, oh wait, I'll go forward. You are directed that any action taken by yourself are considered outside the scope of the city authority and specifically absolve the city from any liability created thereby. You cannot act without the council permission, therefore you are on your own legally. Okay, so again, when was there a public meeting about the legal actions councils taken in the past two months? There's a question and vote that Dan was indeed working for the city and under his scope of work. Where did we vote?
Yeah, what are we, unlost, or?
I don't, we're about, we're still at council, we're still about whether or not-
What does that do about legal counsel? Because that has nothing to do with this right here.
Oh, this is the, this was the response I got to my two complaints.
I think that that's the executive session, correct?
That is correct.
Um, it's actually not, because it's public business. So I, I don't think that this is, we're not, we're not talking about disciplining right now, we're talking about access to an attorney.
Right.
When we have questions about the legality of our own council. And so that, I, I am just bringing that up in discussion, that I do not agree with this in the packet. I feel that it's retaliatory against myself for my own complaints, and that I caution the council for making it more difficult for councilor citizens to access legal assistance.
I just, I would just really love more clarification on it, because I under, I somewhat understand what you're, like, saying, I, I do. I'm just not, like, deep with the jargon always, so.
Me neither.
Okay, I agree.
Okay.
So. Is your, your argument is that you felt like you exhausted your resources and that's why you went?
No, that's correct.
I know, I know, sorry, I don't mean like that.
I just forwarded a complaint to the legal counsel, that's all I did.
So, because that's what we're kind of talking about, so I want to make sure I'm on the same page, too. So like, um, I don't even know what I'm trying to say here. That's, that's really what this is addressing, is like, if I have an issue with something, I'm supposed to come, any of us. We're all supposed to come together, right, and decide if we want the attorney there, correct?
I am, I have multiple requests of council for an executive session to discuss these issues with the attorney, and was, what I thought was ignored, denied, wasn't addressed. Okay, well, so we are, but- Okay, well, this, so, we are, but. But had I not asked for the council, maybe we would not, you know, like, I, I don't know. I don't know, I feel that the, that the way that the charter is written and the council rules are written right now, that they're fine. That I exhausted my efforts. I asked council to meet, we didn't have a meeting. The complaints were about the city manager, so therefore that I was allowed to go. This wasn't like, I just had a question.
Okay.
That's what I'm trying to say, that this was very, you know, retaliatory to me because I'm the one that has complaints and feel that complaints were going to be.
Yes, but it could be anybody, if it specifically this time, maybe it's you, next time it could fit me or somebody else. So that's why it takes council, okay, that you've exhausted.
It's exhausting.
Then it needs to come to council and council needs to approve that to happen, whether it's me, you, or anybody.
And I would say it even says that specifically.
I would think that that maybe puts the city in jeopardy, I don't know what the city attorney thinks about that, that if someone has a legal concern, they can't come to legal counsel?
That's already the way it is.
Yeah, no, it is the way that it is, that if we've exhausted all of our, the two avenues, that we can then come to council, to, to, to legal counsel.
Or.
The power we have is that as individual councilors, four of us have to decide what to do.
Right, as, the only power we have is that.
In the discussion about that, that's, did you ever.
That was my, that is the basis of my complaint, so I think we all stand with that, that we all need to agree, but I am talking about, uh, really a whistleblowing right, that if you have a question or concern that involves our council's legality, that we have the right as councilors to go to our city attorney who represents our city. Why would you not want that, Jerry?
But then you're putting the burden of, of the, so, let's say you feel that way, so you get ahold of our attorney, there's a thousand dollars that we have to pay when we haven't, let's say Jerry does that, there's another thousand dollars.
I have a very good fix, this is best practice for all the cities of Oregon. City attorneys come to our council meetings at least four a week. There you go, that's literally how it's written in our rules. The city attorney is literally says in our rulebook that we have to address the city attorney at our meeting. So that indicates that they are coming to our meetings.
How, just because he's here, does that stop everything that you might be concerned about that might be happening somewhere?
Well, that feels really condescending, Sue, so I'm not ever telling you we're meaning that to be condescending.
No.
I mean, a whistleblowing is saying that you see something wrong within your system and you have a right to be able to go and, and, and report it.
But our system is here miserable all the time, so.
So if I'm reporting to something at council and you ignore it because you don't wanna legally be obligated to it, then that's why I would go to legal counsel, that's why I would go to our city attorney. I don't see why it would be a problem to use what we spend our money on already. We already spent.
More, yeah. He could come today.
Why would it cost more money for him to attend a meeting and not just meet with Dan Cutter alone?
Because time is ours, yeah.
Most likely, if I'm asked the question in a meeting, I'm not gonna be able to answer it. I will have to research it and come back to the next thing. So I think that's how the city got here, was trying to not pay attorneys to attend the city here, to have that come through, and the decision back then was the city manager to funnel those questions.
The cost of legal services over the last five years before this year was roughly?
Five thousand, six thousand dollars.
I would love to see those invoices.
The cost this year.
I would love to see these invoices.
Hundred and ten thousand dollars.
Can you read? Okay.
I would love to see.
I said one year it was a hundred and seventy-six dollars, actually.
I mean, I, I would state specifically that that is one of the reasons that our previous, you know, the firm previously decided to cease providing service. We were just not generating enough billable hours.
I just don't see, I mean, like Mayor Heidi said, having him here quarterly, let's say today's his quarterly, he's at the meeting, and then next week, obviously, you, you have an issue or a problem and you feel you're not getting our cooperation, so you get ahold of the attorney. Well, now he just coughed up even more money, even though he was just here a month earlier.
Yeah, but then my, but that's what I'm saying, is that if the attorney was accessible, then I wouldn't have exhausted all of my other avenues. My only, our, all of council, it's not just me, this is yours too.
Right.
All of council can have, talk to the legal in the meetings, which would mean we have to be here for, or that we've exhausted the city manager. Because I was dealing with complaints about the city manager, I was whistleblowing to the city legal counsel. And here he is, and here we're having an executive session. So to me, this works.
Not because you went to the.
We will never know, Susan, we will never know.
No, we will know because we do have a process for meeting, like, and we are here.
Well, we'll go over that more, 'cause I can't, 'cause my, my understanding is we don't have a process for complaints, and that's why it's an exception, that's the next discussion.
We're making it better, yes.
So exhausting.
Well, so what I'm hearing, yeah, that we don't have, we don't really, I don't think it's clarified as much what it means to exhaust resources. Exhausting resources to one person might be different than exhausting resources to another. We might interpret that differently, right? Like, one person might think emailing out to everybody and saying, I think we should have an executive meeting, and nobody answering is exhausting your resources, that it would be taken into a meet, like, in my world, I'm thinking, am I, should I have brought it to a meeting and talked to the council?
I believe that's what our charter's saying.
It's hard for, I don't, I don't say it's hard, but like, there's a lot of stuff going on and there's like lots and lots of questions, and so I have lots and lots of questions when it comes to somebody wanting to see the attorney and a complaint that happened, like, I do have a lot of questions, and I just don't wanna like jump the gun and be like, yeah, let's, like, I would really have like a conversation with you, with anybody on council to know why they think that that's a valid reason to go.
To go.
To address it, like, I'm, and I have my own things, like, I have things I have issues with and I will like maybe talk to one person and see if they feel the same way or, and I get their feedback, so, I'm just saying, we all have different definitions of it, and I don't know if we can clarify that.
Where's the, the council rules are in play, I can't. But it says, they, in order.
This is where you're at, two point seven.
Yeah, you have to bring it to them.
City attorney shall, at the request of council and the city manager, attend meetings of the council. The council may at any time during a regular or special meeting of the council, call upon the city attorney for oral or written opinion to decide any question of the law.
That's what I was getting, so, what's, what I'm getting now that is, we come to a meeting, Heidi says, council, I, I would like to request our attorney, this is why, blah, 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 we discuss it, if enough of us agree, we say approved, let's have them at the next meeting or have a special meeting. If enough of us say no, we don't feel that that warrants our attorney to be here, then that's the end of the story. That's where I think we, we need to get engaged, to know, why do you want the attorney? Like you said, what's going on, you know, what's the circumstances around this, and we can make that decision. Just emailing us and us not answering you, I don't think that clarifies as I've exhausted all my efforts.
Well, I asked for a meeting, I asked for a meeting to discuss it, and that would deny or reward how anyone go about it. It wasn't like I asked just once either, it was multiple times.
And I would again point out, council rule 6.6, request for legal opinion ends with "sence", and should be made if possible to the CM, but at a regular scheduled council meeting.
Yeah, if it's exhausted.
You felt that it was urgent, the council did not, after being polled, did not, and that this issue was brought up at the next council meeting, which was in September.
But because you weren't here, we decided that we have a following request. Yeah, we honor your request so you can be here.
Because the attorney wasn't here yet, right? You weren't here in September.
Well, we're getting, you weren't here anyways.
Well, more importantly, I think you missed something critical that Mr. Blake said.
Right.
Which is, if you have a question of him and you've brought him to the meeting and you ask him a question, he is not going to sit here and answer it for you. A responsible attorney is not going to swing from the cuff. They're gonna go back, they're going to research and bring that question back, you heard it written for him.
Even if I answered the same question in a city council meeting a year before, I have to research that. The statute hasn't changed, that there's not a new.
Still could we just, still could we then just email you and ask you to research that?
Not one person, as the council, yes.
In a meeting, in a meeting. So that's why I'm saying, I just think it's important that we would have legal counsel in our meetings.
No, we would contact Dan, Dan would get that question prepared and he could bring it to the meeting, instead of him attending too easy.
I think that that would be wonderful if the complaints weren't about the city manager. I honestly believe that's the reason.
I believe that, in the case of the blank for the city manager, you emailed me, I said, I feel this falls under this provision. Therefore, I sent it saying, no one comment on the underlying facts. But we need two city councils, so if someone else feels like we need to, to act on this, let me know, and nobody did. So I felt at that point, which I think was July, that we didn't have a second person.
And we didn't until the last meeting, as far as like.
Because that was the first meeting.
Was it brought up in our next meeting?
Well, we could have special, that's the thing, is I was requesting a special meeting. I was requesting a meeting, and you guys felt fooled that we didn't need to have that meeting.
But our council regularly schedules, next year we'll schedule a council meeting.
I, I think the trap that you're following in here, if I may, is that you asked for a special meeting, which is the exception to this, this serial meeting law. That, that meeting was discussed among different council members and that was denied. That is always gonna be the case. If people, if the seven of you don't want to have a special meeting, you're obligated only to have the regular council meeting once a month. And if one of you desperately wants to have a meeting and the rest of you don't feel it's necessary, then it doesn't happen.
Yeah, if, if I can't convince three other counselors about any of these issues, city attorney, having a special meeting, whatever it is, I need to look at myself and decide, well, I go, I only got one vote, I'm sorry, I can't, I can't get it to happen, I just have to accept it. And maybe I have to get down and say, oh, you know, maybe I was the one that was wrong since everybody else doesn't agree with me.
Maybe. For me to, the complaints are just two counselors and that is four people instead of a regular forum.
Four is still a forum.
Yeah, it's still a forum, and we are gonna have a special meeting or an executive session, so.
I think we need a motion.
I don't know what I'm thinking at this point.
I have two votes.
So anybody wanna make a motion on this?
I'm moving the motion that we adopt to be.
This is.
Clarify.
Point order.
Bring back.
This is to be brought back.
Okay, so this is a.
We, we have a, uh, rule nine point five states that amendments to council rules can't happen in one.
Okay.
It has to be brought back.
Need to make a motion.
To bring it back.
Yeah, to direct.
Second.
Who in favor?
Aye.
I don't know what I'm voting, hold on.
To bring.
To bring it back next month.
Oh, first just to look at it again, Megan, I'm a no. Ben Richards, councilor, no. I don't know. I always, I've got like one other time.
So if I may, the historic rule is if you're uncertain, you should always vote no.
Okay, can I vote no? There you go. All right, moving on to the second to the last discussion that we're gonna have. And this one is about written complaints, and I'm sure you all know how I feel about this one, so this one.
Well, have you, have you read the revised one?
Oh, yeah, I have, and I don't understand the, I honestly think it's hard enough for people to make complaints. I've seen sixteen complaints since I've been here, and as far as I know, we're only talking about the last this afternoon. I don't think so. Sixteen complaints since I've been here? No, we're, we're, we're half of them. I'm sorry, I didn't think that we were even talking about any of them today, because it doesn't say a person that. It just says, in pursuant to records and legal rights, it doesn't say anything about personnel.
You have to decide at that session to hold the personnel. So I would just say. Yeah, you kind of emailed today.
Oh, I don't have that. Yeah, yeah, never mind.
I don't even know, it was twenty-four hours, so.
So this, yeah, so this can be tabled, so that everyone can review that next, that updated record.
Because in my, in my, it's really changed a lot.
I think so too, yeah.
I, I knew it would change a lot from what we saw, what people react.
Would have been nice if it was in the package Friday, yeah, so we'll table that. Oh, I'm sorry, do you, I'm, I'm sorry, is anybody, any, everyone okay with tabling this until we've had twenty-four hours to read the changes that have happened to the package?
We'll have a month.
I'm okay with tabling that to our next meeting.
I second that.
I have to second it.
Do you have a favor?
No, it's by consensus.
Okay, the last discussion of this afternoon. Is about not having a judge. And I honestly thought we didn't have a judge, so. I thought we had stopped having a judge months ago.
We did, that's why. But what else does the judge do besides?
So we have a judge, we primarily use it for traffic, but we do have a municipal court, and we've started to get a stack of code complaints that we need to address. And so, we looked at the code complaints and then we realized that the current judge would be precluded on several of them. Our backup judge, our city attorney, would be precluded on several of them. And in discussions with the attorney and the firm that's gonna handle code issues for us, his recommendation was we should find an out-of-county attorney or municipal, or, or firm to handle our service as a municipal judge, because then there's manual bias, and it's very unlikely that we would have conflicts that we are likely to have.
Well, I'll go down toward open RFP, especially statewide. Anybody else have any concerns or questions about that? Anybody wanna make a move?
I motion that we direct the city to release an RFP.
Anyone second it?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, city managers report.
Uh, sidewalks are moving along Crestline, um, we still have a completion date late in the year, but they're trucking along. I am gonna be reaching out to, they put some of the curbing in and then stopped, and that's mainly because they were consolidating the times that they're gonna do concrete work. I am reaching out to see that when they put in additional curbing, whether we can do a small change order to have the color, the yellow color mixed into the concrete so that we don't have to spray them every year. Our sprayer is aged, we're actually gonna replace it, but it would be a lot easier if we weren't having to spray a mile of, of sidewalk. So if they can put in that curb, all just concrete yellow, then it would be fine, and then we just have. It will fade out a little bit, but it's, you know, built into the concrete, it's gonna last a lot longer than our paint sprayed. Is that reflected too? Yes.
So, the roads are really being chewed up, so what, well, how is it gonna be fixed and when?
That's all part of the contract, once it's done, they come back and they.
They will just patch?
Well, they'll patch parts, but they'll also pay parts, so. Uh, done right now is supposed to be in the November, December time frame.
That's for the whole.
That's for the whole stretch, you know, to bulk, uh, and once that's completed, then asphalt won't happen until probably May, uh, or, but, well, usually May we get enough to start building. Well, it got, it got a lot worse today. They hit a, they, they hit a two-hundred-and-eighty-eight pound fiber line that was not located. And that's why City Hall has no internet. And it's made things a little interesting, to say the least. But they're going to have to patch that. Unfortunately, the patch crew is up at a trestle fire in Kilimok, and so there's delays getting that fiber repaired.
There was fiber people there when I did that.
Yes, they are, they, they came down special for us. But they're trying to, so, it's a 288 pair, it's not cut, it's snagged, it's caked. So they're trying to figure out what pairs are broken, what pairs are fine. So tomorrow morning, for example, they're going to have me switch the fiber over to a new line, because they think by switching, they fix, they'll fix the line, and it will be okay. We'll see. The sewer to the industrial park and to the animal shelter, that project is fundamentally completed. They're doing testing, I believe, this next week. And once that testing is complete, that part of the sewer line will be certified and operational. Then the animal shelter will plug into it, and the animal shelter, I think they're trying to get that done as soon as possible, so that they can open that facility. So it's very exciting. The wastewater project is now on hold, I'm going to, you're going to stop seeing it in this, it's on hold until next summer. And that simply is because they had two control modules that they could not get in time. They showed up in, well, they're supposed to show up in two weeks, but by that point, we have enough storms and water inflow that it would be very foolish for us to try to take the sewer system offline for any amount of time to be able to do the change of. We really have to wait until it dries out, so that we don't overflow our master state, our master station here. So that now will have to happen, because the availability of parts is next great. That's not really a problem, it doesn't affect anything, our system's running, it's fine, our system's always at capacity. All it means is a bunch of paperwork for the city to be here. Southworth Park, we've got two contractors who are buying to finish the concrete for us. One of them is a local through the tri-ons, who's offering to donate a huge portion of it. We're super excited about that. We're hoping to hear from them shortly and make a decision. We did get the ADA parking all finished and complete, and it's very nice. I gave a talk about this project on Tuesday at the local, or at the statewide Regional Parks and Recreation Conference. And we had a lot of people who were super excited, a lot of people asking questions of how they can do the same thing in their community. There were some larger cities who were very jealous of the size of our playground. So we may have started a playground arms race event, which I think can just be nothing but good for kids, so. The cedar repairs, we've done a couple repairs, we know we've got more to do. We tried to put something in place while we worked, we've determined that the company that laid the fiber down the road has created some of the sinkhole problems that we're having with the water. So we're going to work with them on an engineering, we think we've actually got a solution that's getting the water off the road. So far, it's held up, we're waiting to see if it rains and then dries, if it stays dry. And then we're going to work on smoothing that out a lot more, and getting the top hole patched. And then repaving that portion of the road next summer. We did not, as a side note, we did not get the grant that we were really excited about, which was going to do the engineering for us on the bottom half of Press Line. So we'll keep pushing for that one next year. We missed it by just a few points, it was very competitive, but they gave us guidance on what we can do next year, and I think we should be able to get it next year. And that's important, because this will be engineering probably a five to $10 million project, and then we can start going to the state for that five to $10 million, so that we don't have to buy it. The web changes, you know, it's incredibly frustrating when you get a company that's, you know, go, 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 get it up and running, and then they tell you that, oh, I'm going on leave, and it won't happen until November. So we're working with them, we're trying to push it forward, but it's entirely out of our hands, simply because they, their personnel have a stack of projects, and based on, you know, it's first in, first served, so we're behind about four other communities, so they're going through it as fast as they can. The roof? Is it bleaching?
Not yet, but we haven't really had it
Dan, Tom and I checked it today, and we didn't find even the smallest leaks.
I'm super excited.
I will let you know if I
So in terms of the center roof, we think the ceiling is done. We're super excited, but we're really waiting for that big, big storm. I know we had a little bit of one the other day, but we need that 60 mile per hour driving rain, pushing it up in this office to see that this has solved it. I spoke with the contractor, they help ex the materials, but if they need to come back and touch it up, they can. But it looks really good, it, you can barely tell that they, you know, that the cover, because they matched the color so well, so really excited. And then, I had occasion to walk through the, the recent Fall Festival over in Corvallis, and one of the things that caught my eye was a large group of very excited volunteers who run the flower basket program through the city of Corvallis. We have struggled with how to run and organize the planters here in town. I would like to extend an invitation to bring a few of those volunteers out, buy them a nice dinner, and have them sit and talk to the community and the council about how their program runs, so that we might get a sense of what we might do to organize a successful, similar program out here. But they were, they had all their flower baskets, at their Fall Festival, they took all their flower baskets out, and they put them in a big row, and then they auctioned and sold them all. And people were going nuts buying these things for hundreds of dollars, so it was really cool to see and watch. So, if it's okay, I'm planning on inviting them in kind of the little period, January, February timeframe, to come out and talk about how we might do it, and see if we can't get that interest.
Would I suggest that we pull our master gardeners that have been part of kind of our, make sure that they're able to come to that?
Yes, absolutely.
Are you sending more to that program?
I'm not, I'm not.
You're not, okay.
I just like to go and
We just like to help, okay?
Yeah, I think we, I think what we do is we send it out, because it wouldn't be a formal council meeting, workshop, and if four of you decide to come, we'd notice it, but it would really be a presentation. So there's a, again, it would cut out in Oregon public meeting law, where if it's just an educational program, it doesn't have the same rules for public meetings, because you're just pretending, it's like you're also attending a class. So, but we would host that and figure out some good times where everybody would come and be part of that.
All right, are we supposed to have an agenda for the executive session? I don't know, that doesn't normally how we have that.
We, we have a packet to hand out to the council members, once a little bit to executive session, and then there are three items which the attorney will go through for discussion.
Okay, if your council members can forward the executive session there.
We get to forward. And does anyone have any comments, circumstances, or responses to public comment?
You don't have any, then you have to go with the advisory group, who the new person can be. Have we decided who's requesting our home advisory?
Well, I am, but I
But she asked, she asked
Something I didn't know if I was
It, it's my consensus, we just didn't want to assign you that.
Yeah.
If she's a second, I go.
If you're applying to get me.
Yeah.
Karen, do you have a I'm okay with it, she, she said a couple, she knows the people on the party. I mean, as, as I mentioned last one, the only reason I'm not on it is that they've been transitioning in a different direction than what I started with, and I think the UIs and what we're going. It's not, it's not that I don't agree with what they're doing, it's just not what I joined when I started a year ago.
Changed a lot.
It has changed a lot.
I'm still trying to figure out what all it is.
Yes, sorry.
But they have funding, so.
Oh, it's good to have money.
Yeah.
That, that's a lot of my own comments, just to make sure that was, because I'm getting emails, and maybe now somebody can send them out and say, contact I.
Is someone in the city do that?
Yes, that's, that actually, that will be on, but we have internet tomorrow, I will get that done right away.
Great. Anyone else? Jerry?
I went to the League of Oregon Cities 100th Conference in Portland this last weekend. Got a lot of good stuff out of it, which I will probably share during the next council meeting. There's some good ideas that were presented that I'd like to see if they add further around here too.
Just council, want to request that we have family agenda for the meeting to share out some of the
I don't have the motion, can I?
I don't think we gave a motion.
Oh, perfect.
Thank you.
I don't have anything.
I would just like to remind people that Monday is Indigenous People's Day, even though the council did not vote for staff to have the day off, I just remember who's the underarm?
Thank you, I appreciate you. All right, and I just want to say that I'm very grateful for our executive session next, so yay. On that note, we close in going to the executive session, and you will, and I'll be a couple things, but I just want to let you know that we come back afterwards, after deliberation, and sometimes make a vote then. So if you, I know it sounds like fun, but if you want to hang out in the parking lot or in the hallway when we open up, then you're welcome back in for the last half of the meeting, or this meeting or whatever. Yeah, hopefully we all know about that. So, do I dismiss this meeting and then read the executive session?
No, you read the executive session, and then the attorney
And you're good, okay, so executive session, the city of Walport council will meet in executive session pursuant to ORS 1926602F to consider records conditionally exempt from law and by public inspection, and ORS 1926602H to meet with city legal counsel to confer regarding legal rights and duties related to potential litigation. And now I'm going to adjourn, it says actions of training from up here. So I'm adjourning from this to go into the executive session, and then we'll be back to vote after that.
You might give it a few minutes.
Yogi knocked down my fence now.
Oh, no kidding.
Well, folks, I will see you all there after this executive session, and see what decisions, if any, decisions and actions that Betty are taking from this executive session. Get jack o'woods. Well, folks, we're just wrapping up that executive session. Looks like the public is coming back in here to see what actions we're going to take from that.
I just noticed you, you look adorable. Everybody? All right, so Okay. Okay. Seven and two, and I'm calling back in the regular meeting. Anybody else council have a motion to make?
I think on item number one, we're taking no action, is that correct?
Yeah.
You have to
I can motion to take no action.
You, you need to say what it is. This, this leads back to December, where you have a very small thing that's said, that doesn't encompass another true instruction.
So basically
With, with regard to
The trademark, right?
With regard to contract and federal trademark objections regarding Walport men, once they mark it, no further action. So why do you need to make that motion?
Go ahead.
Do you want to add that to your motion?
Yeah, what, I don't know if I can say all that.
That was a loss.
On the act, on, on the action of the first against breach commerce for the market for a trademark violation.
Objecting to their federal trademark.
Objecting to their federal trademark, I make a motion, we, we, we do need nothing.
And I'll second that. And did you, did you include the
Contract.
Contract?
The contract.
No further action with regards to
You see, part of
Breach of contract against
Contract and, and, and the breach of contract.
Can we get that? I'm relying on the recording.
Okay, so, you did motion, and you did second.
Can you say the motion again, please? No, I'm sorry, I really don't understand what the motion is, but
We're not going to go after the federal lien because of the trademark, and that the breach of contract is a, we're
Just drop it.
Kind of dropping it.
Okay. The breach of the contract that we talked in December.
Yeah, we're not going to pursue.
And then who seconded it?
I seconded it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And anyone opposed? All in favor?
All in favor?
Yeah. The next, uh, next motion?
Are these tied together, two and three, or?
No.
No, none of them are tied together.
Number two, which one was that?
A letter.
A letter.
A letter.
I'll make a motion that, uh, our, we have the firm that he was working with write a letter to CIS asking them to have it be under their umbrella.
Pay for the
Pay for the expenses. Pay for expenses. Yeah.
I'll second that motion.
And then all in favor?
Aye.
And I'm a no.
And then the third is regarding complaints, is that correct?
Yes.
And I motion that we have a hearing on the complaints of the city manager.
And I'll second that.
And what does your complaint say that Cory Blake and Megan and CIS to coordinate?
So we have
I heard you said CIS The motion has been included.
And you should, normally Dan would be the one that handles the notices of the paper, so you should instruct that Megan is going to be the one, in this case, to handle the motions with the newspaper.
I second that Megan handles it all.
Okay, so what is the motion?
That we're going to a hearing.
That we're going to a hearing.
And Megan is going to handle it with CIS and Cory Blake.
Yes.
And put out the notice.
And a second?
That's me.
Oh, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
No, I don't want to have a hearing, I didn't want any of this to happen at all. Yeah, no, I'm just really, yeah, not happy about it at all. I think we should have had this once again.
But now that we're having a hearing, you don't want one?
I mean, I don't know if it's going to make a difference, Greg. We'll see if it makes a difference. All right, do you need adjourn? Oh, unless you have any other comments? Okay.
Nope.
So you guys have some, oh wait, no, we're going to have our
Workshop next week.
Yes, six o'clock.
Here, right?
Yes. An agenda is posted as soon as you
I don't get a lunch or dinner any of the two days because I have to
Well, folks, that was definitely very heated into the meeting. Very things discussed, I can't really get into right now, but I'm sure we will see the results of them here in the next coming months. I'll catch on the next one, folks, thanks for watching.